I think first up, we have the mayor making a presentation.
Mayor and Chief are making a presentation, yes. Chief, we join you.
It is with great honor that we, the town of Mount Airy, pay honor and respect to one of our sons and a unique and special part of our history. Charles Bud Norris, Buzz Norris, was our first neighborhood watch. He would walk the streets at night, he would check doors. In fact, I've heard from residents on Hill Street, they told me they felt safe just knowing Buzz was on the job. Apparently, he would scribble tickets for a variety of reasons, and he would also use adult language. There has been other law enforcement in this town. A Mr. Ed Fowler, that I'd like to note, and meter attendants Roy Skaggs and Morley Harrison. I hope I said that correctly. Is that one of your relatives? Harrison? That need to be mentioned, but none that touched the hearts and memories and inspired stories like Charles Buzz Norris. In fact, he was the first thing many residents remember about the town of Mount Airy if you talk to them. This time, I'd like to call his family up for a presentation. If you want to turn it around.
Wow.
So joining me is Buzz's sister. Ellen, Ellen Norris, and Buzz's niece, Mary Beth Ruck. Would also be her daughter. Okay, so, wow, this is a lot to, oh my gosh. I'm gonna read it quick. "Mount Airy, Maryland, while most places it's the police who protect the community, this story is slightly different in the small Maryland town. Here, it's the people who look out for the town cop. Buzz wears all the toy trappings of a lawman proudly. A badge, a large yellow water pistol. He takes, hold on, he takes his calling seriously. And a benevolent town indulges him. This town believes Buzz is special. He has grown up here, and this is where he spends his days patrolling the streets. Indeed, it's not so much a story about Buzz as it is the people who make this town. As little boys, Tom and Buzz, excuse me, Tom and Bill Wagner, the town's butchers, played with Buzz Norris. They used to play baseball, and as kids, hold on, they used to play baseball with us kids, says Tom Wagner. He was limited in his running, of course, he never threw him out, but, but we always let him get to the base, his brother Billy adds. American League didn't invent the designated hitter, Buzz did. He didn't want to play outfield, so he was the batter for both teams. But the Wagner brothers grew up and took over the family meat business. Buzz hugged around the firehouse for many years, only to later drift into his own version of police work. His make-believe job keeps Buzz busy. He has become notorious for his penchant to give people parking tickets. Billy Wagner said he got one just the previous day. I haven't paid it yet, he says in mock fear. This is one town where people treasure a parking ticket only because it is from Buzz." And by the way, there's one that exists, I think we're gonna get back. Where did I stop at? Because from Buzz. Okay. "The town is patient and compassionate with this gentle man, who is in no hurry to finish a sentence or to get someplace truly unique in the competitive world. When Jill Dodd took over the Old Town Restaurant, part of her deal was to feed Buzz when he was there. Dodd even got to understand his little idiosyncrasies, said Buzz's sister Anne McVeigh. When he sat at the counter, he wanted something to eat, and when he sat at the table, he wanted a cup of coffee. I don't know how they figured that out, said McVeigh. With so much love, it falls to McVeigh to impose discipline. Oh, he has to take a bath every night where he wouldn't take, where he wouldn't take it, she says. Buzz thought, you know, once a week, Saturday night, that was enough. She thinks Buzz wouldn't have survived in any other city. Billy Wagner agrees that people in Mount Airy take care of Buzz, they look out for him, and they love him. Buzz is Mount Airy. Buzz knows that, everybody loves me around here, he says trepidly. So just so the audience knows, in honor of our first police force, on behalf of the town of Mount Airy, the town council, the citizens of Mount Airy, and our police chief Doug Reeves, who will present this number-one police badge to Charles Bud Norris, our first police officer."
Let the town council see it?
Yeah, we haven't seen it. Pat, what you read, is that an old newspaper article or something?
That was an article that was in CNN.
Okay. Oh, I remember when CNN did that thing on him, okay. I remember that.
Popped in a number-one badge, the new town reassembled, a picture of Buzz in the letter. We got that. And I'd actually like the family to hold that photograph, so the audience can see. Now, if you'd like Mary Beth and her mother, if you want to present it to them, you can do the photograph.
That's how I wrote the parking tickets. What I knew what he wrote.
Boy, I'd challenge that.
So y'all wanna get a picture, Ellen and Pat?
Nobody knows what I write either. When you do a ticket? I write anything.
Mary Beth, I'd like to say a few words.
All right, thanks.
I was gonna say a lot of words, but I didn't realize all this was written, so you all just cut my speech real short.
So, and there are other family members here too. So on behalf of--
Mary Beth, lift the mic just a little.
Do I have to lift it?
Yes, because you're on TV.
Oh, great. Okay, thanks, Bob. On behalf of all my family, I'd like to thank the council and the mayor for recognizing my uncle Buzz Norris posthumously with the first badge of the Mount Airy Police Department. It's truly a grand honor for us. Most of the stories were already told, so I'm not gonna go through all that, but I did wanna say that, you know, we use a lot of big words these days, and we talk about fostering inclusion through awareness, but 50 years ago, my uncle was loved by this community. And the citizens protected him, and they gave him a purpose. And he truly loved this town, and everybody loved him, so, um, thank you all very much. Very special.
All right, up next?
You wanna hand out tissues first, or?
Up next, we've got council minutes, we've got the 418 meeting, as well as the closed minutes meeting. Now, I'd sent around an email about an issue I had with the closed meeting minutes. However, Debbie went back and confirmed that the minutes are correct. I mean, I just wrote back and said, I'm not sure that that's what was said, but she said it was. She went back and listened, so I'm satisfied with that. So I will move that we approve both the open and the closed meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, Ken seconding, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Do we have any of the resident troopers here? Do not see them. Chief Reeves?
Good evening, everybody. Keep mine fairly brief tonight. I know we got a lot going on this evening. Fairly late month this month, with everything that we've done. Basically, we've attended several trainings and so forth. We were at the MML Police Executive Association meeting. PSA Bets had training in crime prevention and so forth, which will allow him to assist with crime prevention measures. He'll be able to go out into the field and do crime prevention surveys at businesses and homes and so forth for victims of crime, or anybody who would like to have that done eventually. We also attended firearms training at the Hatbaker Range in Westminster, so the officers are now able to carry their firearms with their police commission. Also submitted my staff report with the employees of the department, Corporal Halterman, Sergeant Snyder, as well as PSA Bets for your review and also future activities. Does anybody have any questions or anything for? No, okay, good, that's my report.
This is the first time we've seen your uniform, too. So let's see it for the crowd, come on, here's our new uniform. First time I've seen it.
Just the prototype.
It looks nice, looks nice, it's great.
I could walk the runway if you want me to.
Whatever you wanna do.
Since this very well could be my last council meeting, I hope not too. We have a special presentation, Chief and I. Okay, I'm just gonna read one of them, but each council member's gonna get one. In appreciation of your dedication, vision, leadership, in creating the Mount Airy Police Department, this inaugural shield is presented to Council, this one, Council President Peter Helt, by Mayor Pat Rockenberg and the Mount Airy Police Department. Each one of you gets one of these. There you go.
Thanks, I didn't know these were colored.
Can y'all need to get up?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Kane?
I'm honored.
Councilman Phoebe? Councilman Jason Poirier?
Hey guys, don't go flashing these badges anywhere, okay?
Jason just whispered in my ear, you gotta be wearing a badge just to get our ticket.
If y'all could hold those. Okay. Councilman Scott Schrally? If y'all could hold this up.
I got one more.
Oh, you do?
I did sneak one in, because you didn't ask for this, but I figured there's a lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into this, and you were the driving force behind that, so I figured that we could present you with one also.
Kane, I didn't lose that much weight on the trip.
All right, up next, we've got the volunteer fire company report. I don't see, I know Bruce is busy counting votes, I wasn't sure everybody else was gonna be here, so. Citizen concerns, community comments. This is 15 minutes or so we set aside. If anybody has anything they want to address the council on, come on up and we'll hear from you.
Hearing none, we'll move right along.
Well, of course, we, it really doesn't matter, because we can't be done till Bruce gets here.
That is true.
So, once Bruce gets here, we need to pick up the pace, but--
Hurry up, Bruce.
Until he gets here, all right. Up next, ordinance is resolutions. Ordinance 2017-6, this is amendment to the signed ordinance. This is only here for introduction, and Bobby, you can introduce?
Yes, please.
I will second the introduction. And we need to set a public hearing for June. Do we want that at the June meeting, or do we wanna do it dead quick, is my question?
Well, here's the question I'm gonna ask.
For this, are we gonna have a budget workshop, can we do it then?
Um, no, that's, when's that, May 10th?
That's only in a week.
I've been having--
A little over a week, yeah. Well, now, my only question was, do we wanna do it at the June council meeting, or is that already gonna be booked up enough?
I would, I would think yes.
Okay.
If we could do it, you know, I don't think the signed ordinance is--
7:15 at the June council meeting?
It's just one section.
Right, it's not, right, I don't think we're gonna have people showing up for that, really.
I think the way that planning is approaching a signed ordinance now is just piece by piece, instead of trying to get this whole thing, the things that they need to do their jobs downstairs is what we're passing first. For example, I think we've already brought about the signs on front, back of buildings and that kind of stuff. So just the things that we know we can pass early, we're putting in.
How does this change from the red, yellow, green cut that we took? I know Heather's not here right now, but I'm just curious. Does it differ from that plan before? Because we had already passed one that was the first preliminary cut. Is this a revamp of the whole entire thing, or is this building on it?
Um, it's just building on it.
Okay.
All right, so 7:15 at the June council meeting. Debbie, got that? 7:15, June council meeting.
Are we gonna be able to bump this?
We're not gonna do it.
Can we bump into the workshop, though?
Oh, well, I, okay.
Doesn't apply or?
All right, 12A, which is the award of the contract, we'll do that at the, at the, at the May 10th meeting.
We'd like to do it, though.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, all right. Unfinished business, ordinance 2017-5, set the tax rate and tax budget. Public hearing, it will be--
May 10th?
May 10th, at 8:30 at Town Hall. Do we actually, that's just an announcement, we don't need to move anything there, do we?
Then we're gonna have a special council meeting after.
What's the purpose of the special council meeting after?
The special council meeting will be a vote for in the budget. We're just gonna have a public--
Oh, okay, right, right, I knew we were having a council meeting that night, that's it.
It's up to the mayor about--
Okay.
About the, um, the mayor, whether or not he wants to make his liaison appointments then, so completely up to--
Okay, gotcha, all right.
And then we'll do the recommendation for the police attendants.
Gotcha. All right. We're skipping over the construction award recommendation, the mayor wants to go with that, some more, I think, wants to go through those numbers and do some more cutting, which you're well-known for. Set the date for the July council meeting, because that's July 3rd, which is the night of the fireworks. Wanna go a week later, like we usually do?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Debbie, July council meeting a week later. Do we have to vote on that? I'll move we go, what date is that gonna be?
The 10th.
All right, move we do it July 10th, got a second from Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Yeah, we were looking at the calendar and realized that that wasn't gonna work. Okay, schedule swearing-in and council appointments to liaison positions, that is by code on the 15th. Although the mayor can do his liaisons at a later date if he wants, but he could do it that night.
May 15th at 7?
May 15th at 7:30? That's our usual, usual council meeting time, 7:30?
7:30.
We'll swear in--
You'll swear in the new council members, whoever--
The mayor will have to be sworn in--
Yes. Does the mayor, will the mayor, does the mayor still go up to Westminster and get sworn in, or they come down here?
He's here, we'll--
Okay. All right, Jason, swing.
Yes, um, so, a few days after our budget meeting, we had our Parks and Recs board meeting. And we were approached by a resident looking to increase accessibility to our parks. And was going to other parks for ADA accessible swings. And, and asked if we would, as a parks board, consider installing, if possible, a ADA-compatible swing. It was a rather lengthy discussion, and, and we kinda worked out some details. Amethyst and Brian conversed, talked together. And I would, I told them that I would try and find some, some funds to cover this, even though we had just set our, our budget. And I'm not sure if I need to, if we need to make a motion or not. It's, it's moving some monies from one line item to another. And so, the 65,000 that we had dedicated towards the ballfield lights at Watkins Park, I let Charlene know that I wanted to take 5,000 from the 65,000 and create a budget line item for the ADA swing. So we have 5,000 going towards this ADA swing. We're still working on the details, where the swing is gonna go, whether it's going to be at Summit Ridge or at Watkins Park. But I just wanted to inform the council--
What about Prospect?
Uh, the, the main reason those two parks, Summit Ridge is, is getting repaved for ADA accessibility going down to the ballfields. And then Watkins Park is always a very popular spot, so we're gonna kinda work on that. But I just wanted to make the council aware of the monies being shifted there.
All right, I don't think we need to vote on that, Bob.
Yeah, I don't, I, it was just--
It's all within parks.
It really is all one, and then it's just one line item, so I just wanna--
I'll say, my daughter's a nerd, and she works with a lot of handicapped people. And last week, we were walking through a park out in Ohio, and there was a handicap swing there, and she was showing it to me, saying, we really, you really need to put one of those in in Mount Airy. So when I saw this on the agenda, I was like, okay, good.
They're actually very unique. One is, is for a wheelchair, so someone that cannot be lifted up out of the wheelchair can just roll their wheelchair into the swing, lock their, lock their wheels into it, and use that as, as their natural swing. And then the other one, from where Abel, or, or for someone to carry someone out of a--
Kind of a lean-back, kinda--
Couldn't lean back, almost like a, like a preschool-type setting, you know, like, like a recliner. So, that's what we're looking at right now, we're, we're looking at doing both of those. And, and so I just wanted to make the council aware about the 5,000 that I shifted over.
All right, thanks, Jason.
Yeah.
All right, up next, street closing approval for the Fireman's Parade, which is July 27th at 7 o'clock. I will move that we close the streets for the Fireman's Parade. Do I have a second? I see Bob's finger going up.
Question on that.
Yep.
Also, in that letter, foreclosing there, asking for the police department to assist in security there. Are we set up to do that?
We're working on it.
As part of approval of it, was there, for the police to assist in--
Right.
Security there?
Right, the police department itself is working on that. Hopefully, we're gonna have at least three of us available for that. We're still working with the state police and the sheriff's department right now to see if we can finalize some plans, so.
Now, are you gonna work both corners, or just that one, or?
We'll be working both of them.
You know, Chief, what they used to do is reschedule the officers to prevent overtime, and they would just drop another shift and do that, so I'm sure you're aware of that, but I still had raised the issue. Because we still are under contract to Maryland State Police till October 1st of 2017.
Yeah, so I assume they'll probably be assisting at the parade, because at the parade, it takes quite a few people.
Yeah, they've always, they can do the same thing that they've always done, we just have a better, we have more officers.
Let's keep our fingers crossed.
Well, on the plus side, you can lead the parade with one of our cars.
Correct.
Which--
Instead of a trooper vehicle, it should be a town car.
Yeah, yeah, so that would be neat.
You think you should have both?
No, no.
Well, I would say it's Councilman Phoebe's last meeting and last act, that you should have both. With ours in front.
All right, well, we've got a motion, we've got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
It would be kind of the trading of the guard, and I think that would be, it's a good idea, as all your ideas are.
Okay, we need to approve the, first amendment to the purchase-to-the-sale agreement for One Park Avenue, so that the mayor can sign it. Tom has given it to us, Tom, you wanna brief us on it?
Yeah, so this just extends the date by which we're to close. There was a little bit of delay in getting the subdivision plat recorded. This is for the shed property. And now it is recorded, and we can move forward. But in the interim, the close date was, I think, April 15th, so we're bumping it a month to allow us to close on time.
All right, I will, we'll move we authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Got a second from Scott, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
One day?
I'm just curious, uh, does everybody know what that building is that we're talking about? I think a lot of people might not know what we're talking about. Might even want to explain to them what we're talking about.
It's the shed up there on the corner.
Why we bought it.
By the parking lot.
It's, it's a rusty shed that's right there on the corner, directly across from the Flatiron Building. The original thought, Barney, correct me if I'm wrong, was that we would purchase that as part of the Flatiron Project. That being said, we knew the Flatiron Project would not be moving forward at this time. But Barney said, regardless and independent of the Flatiron Property, we should still move forward to, to purchase that property for other reasons. Correct, Barney?
Yep.
All right, mayor and council reports.
I do not have a report to give, I just wanna mention a couple things. The presentation to Charles Buzz Norris is gonna go to the family of Buzz Norris, but I have asked, that once the historical society is up and running and relocated to the rail yard, that the, the shadow box be permanently given back to the historical society for, so for future generations of Mount Airy. And so you'll probably be holding it for a year or so, you can trade it, put it in different rooms and stuff. But we'd like to see it, if you wouldn't mind it coming back. I'd also like to note what a great job, job the chief did. The chief has designed our logo, our badge, these boxes and that presentation. The chief does a great job designing, I think he was designer before he was an officer, I don't know. But he did a fantastic job. I'd also like to take this time, since it's Councilman Ken Phoebe's last council meeting, for us all to give him a round of applause and thank him for extraordinary--
Ken, don't forget you have one special meeting on the 10th still.
This is last official, but I'll tell you--
This is last regular meeting.
This is last regular meeting, and Ken has just been a wonderful addition to this team. We haven't always agreed, but I tell you, I can, I can count the times that Ken has won this council over, and sometimes it's totally surprised us.
Yep, it has. Have I told you how much I'm gonna miss you?
About a hundred times, yeah. Thank you.
He sits back there, and then every now and then, he throws out like these bits of wisdom.
Oh. It's been a long month for the mayor.
It's been a long day, too.
So my recommendations for council appointments and some moving. I'd like to appoint Rachel Price to the Ethics Commission as an alternative. Thank you, she's in the audience. I'd also like to move Roxanne Hempel, who has served remarkably on the Planning Commission, from alternate to a full-voting member.
I will move we accept the mayor's recommendations.
I'll second.
Got a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, beautification, Parks and Rec.
I wasn't at the last beautification meeting due to our budget meeting. But the, the team has still gone on and have done some wonderful work over at Vestpocket. And they're actually planning to do some gardening at Wildwood and Prospect. So that, that commission keeps working hard. Parks and Recs, I was at. And we're looking at our continued use of field usage and how we can increase fields. So we looked at some alternative locations, and, and we're working to make sure that all of our, all of our youths have access to fields. We're looking at also incorporating some field scheduling software to help with the calendar. The ADA swing was brought up. We're also continuing to look at the Parks Attendant Modified Job Description. Excuse me. And we have some 5K races. The Bulldog Dash already happened, but we have Avis 5K, the Mutt Run. Those are the more recent ones coming up, so just be, just, if you're driving on North Main, just keep an eye out for runners on those sidewalks, we know they're, the space is limited. Camp nights coming up. We have a few movie nights planned, along with a summer passport, which invites our youth to go from park to park to complete different activities. And I'm also looking at working with a, a resident who was here in Mount Airy some time ago. Her parents actually passed away and were spending a lot of time in Mount Airy, and actually were longtime residents. And we're looking at putting a memorial at Watkins Park on the path going up to the Dog Park. So you'll see some, I, I worked out a few details, some new azaleas going up. And it is with the Fawcett family, so if you are, if you know the Fawcett family, we're, we're gonna put a memorial up at her parents', both mom and dad passed away, so we're gonna put a memorial up there for her. And I think that's it.
Do we have a date for camp night?
Uh, we do, I, I didn't write it down on these notes. Do you happen to remember Amethyst by often, and? No?
Okay.
August?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be August 12th.
Yes. I was gonna say 10th, but-- Thank you.
August 12th, okay.
Okay.
All right, EDC, planning.
Um, let's see. Planning Commission met on Monday, April 24th, at 7 o'clock at Town Hall. Open space regulations and R-value, which really are looking at an effort to be fair with developers and calculations of required land donations for open space. So we're, we're looking at that stuff. Criteria will be available soon to use in hiring a downtown master plan specialist. May 10th at the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company's activities, building 6:30 to 8 is the Maryland. 27 corridor study is being released to the public. Don't miss that, that's a big one. And our next meeting will be on May 22nd, 7:00 PM, Town Hall. This is a week early due to Memorial Day. Memorial Day falls on the twenty-ninth. Economic Development Commission had our meeting on April the twenty-sixth, seven o'clock at Town Hall. Zach Peters reported that Maryland State Comptroller Peter Franchu will be visiting Mount Airy on Thursday, May eighteenth, eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty P., eleven-thirty AM to twelve-thirty PM. Small Business Roundtable is the format, and all are invited. We discuss our new EDC work plan and our buy local campaign. Next meeting will be on May the twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, seven o'clock. The Mount Airy Inn upstairs for dinner, we're starting to, about every other month for a while, we'll, we'll meet at some of the local restaurants and try to help with EDC. I also had an MML Frederick County meeting on Thursday, May the twenty-third. Our officers were elected and will remain the same, and do not ask me what their names are, because I don't know. We had a long discussion on our, our number one priority was the total restoration of HUR funds, you know, that we use for our, our local street projects and stuff. They were cut to nothing a few years ago, and they're back up to, I think, about twenty percent now, is what they're telling me. But we're still missing eighty percent of what we used to get. We also had a long discussion on drug use and overdoses, and how, you know, that's really tearing this, this state and this county particularly up. So that is my report.
Thanks, Bob. For those who, who don't know, since we got time, because Bruce isn't here yet. HUR is Highway User Revenues. I've served on streets for many years. When you pay a gas tax, that gas tax is supposed to pay for roads. And the state does a calculation, and they come in and they measure how many roads we have. And then we get a percentage of that based on how much road we have. So basically, it gets divided equally. Well, a few years ago, the state decided that they wanted more than their share. And so they just started taking the town's share, so they would spend it on their roads and not give it to us to spend on our roads. And for the town of Mount Airy, what they would give us in Highway User Revenues, that was basically our whole paving budget for the year.
Yeah.
It's like, you know, half a million dollars. And so all of a sudden, they're like, they're going to use it and keep it, even though we're supposed to get it, because we're paying taxes for it. So MML is through, through our representatives, Maryland Municipal League is fighting to get that back for us. Scott, you want to talk some trash?
Sure, I'll talk trash. So for the month of April, we did not have a meeting for sanitation recycling. We did have two very large events, which hopefully people participated in. I do not have status on that, but hope to get it. One was the Electronics Recycling Day on the twenty-second, which was hosted by the American Legion Auxiliary. The other one J&amp;J Trash had, which was our bulk trash pickup on the twenty-ninth.
I had something sitting in my garage for weeks. I remembered to take it out.
I saw tons of stuff sitting out on the curb.
It was great, I remembered.
And I, and I heard stories that, you know, the, the scavengers always come by the night before trying to pick things up.
Ultimate recycling.
Oh, yeah.
Saves us money.
Yeah, when I was a kid, I used to get a lot of cool stuff that way.
But, um.
I still do. I saw that couch in the back of your truck.
Nothing unless that freezer that they, that they took out of my, that freezer that I haven't been able to get rid of for twenty years.
There was, there was two nice couches. But, um, so that was the month of April. As far as the month of May coming up, we do have a meeting for sanitation recycling. It'll be on the seventeenth at seven PM here at Town Hall. And also to note for the residents, there are two yard waste days. The first is going to be the sixth, coming up this weekend, and then the next one will be the twentieth. And that concludes my report.
All right, sounds good. Streets and Roads, Ken?
Yes.
Will be your last Streets and Roads report. We won't, we won't have those the next meeting.
Streets and Roads, there's only two of us there, so we ain't have too much to discuss, so. The next meeting of Streets and Roads is June twenty-second. And while I'm on this subject, it's my last meeting, and I'd like to say it's a brilliant privilege serving you guys. It really has. I really enjoy myself, and, and it gives you a new appreciation for elected officials. If anybody ever serves, it gives you a real appreciation for what elected officials, even higher up, go through. And I've had the privilege of meeting the governor a few times, and so it's been great. My wife has given me a lot of good pointers. When I get home, she say, "Make sure you step in that seat." Right? Right? So every time I step back in the seat, I think, her voice comes right to me. Make sure you step in that seat. Make sure you're talking to the mic. Every time I go home, she'll say, "You done okay." So I really got to thank her. She, she was my campaign manager when I run. She, as you know, she, she has MS, and she got on her scooter and rode around the community, and she done most of it door to door. So I really got to thank her.
Yeah, I'm going to give Judy a round of applause.
We'll be around, and thank you all very much.
Judy, thanks for giving them to us for four years.
And keeping them on track.
All right, Water and Sewer. Water and Sewer's next meeting, well, we're the odd one, because we're, we're meeting right after. We will be meeting Wednesday night here at seven o'clock. One of the topics will be the water tower refurbishment down by Walmart. That water tower, Barney, I think is going to be there to talk to us about that. There's been some discussions over, at what point do we replace, and at what point do we refurbish? So we'll be discussing that. We've also been very carefully watching the budget and everything else to see where dollars are falling. So probably in the next few months, we'll sit down and make evaluations as far as whether we're going to make any type of increases in the water rates or not. Obviously, those haven't been made yet, because the numbers aren't all finished, so, but we will be looking at that. Up next, well, Space Allocation Task Force has not met in quite a while, actually. Monica, Town Administrator.
Okay, the town completed a customer service training on the twenty-seventh of April, and the training session covered a lot of information on working with people around with social media, and how best to provide like optimal customer service in that arena. The staff has an initial draft of the Downtown Master Plan, RFP. It's currently under review by the Planning and Engineering Staff. It's going to be forwarded, it's going to be. Thank you.
Oh, geez. Look at that.
We have an initial draft of the RFP for the Downtown Master Plan. It's being forwarded to Planning and Engineering, and then it's going to go on to the Planning Commission and the Economic Development Commission. Carroll County Environmental Services has applied for and received $425,000 grant to help with our Marydale Gardens Storm Pond renovation, which is going to pay for almost seventy-five percent of that product, which is great. The second phase of engineering is now underway for the Storm Pond renovation project in Twin Ridge. Now that the weather has warmed up permanently, we're fielding nuisance complaints such as ATV riding in town, all types of animal-related issues, tall grass, et cetera. Please refer to the Town Code Section Seventy-four and Seventy-six for more detailed information. And the last thing I have is that our Mount Airy Police Department is in the process of developing their own Facebook page, so please check them out at facebook/MountAreyPD.
All right, Monica, you mentioned Marydale. I have on my calendar, June sixth, there's going to be some meeting out there at that Storm Pond, at that Storm Pond, I think, with the county reps.
Right, the county will have like initial engineering drawings, and they'll probably be showing the residents what the plan is, because some of the adjoining residential areas, the lot owners are concerned about tree coverage and stuff like that. So they want to explain.
And that's out, that's out at the pond during the day on June sixth. I have that on my calendar.
Monica, I, I had one question. The Storm Pond, or the Storm Drang Pond at, that's being done in Twin Ridge, and that's, that's Frederick County, and, and we're somehow involved with Carroll County's program. Are they administering that for us?
Yeah, they're doing all the administrative, they're doing all the bidding, all the engineering work for us. We sign off on all the plans and then review everything that they do. It's just that we're paying, you know, we're paying in full for that project versus in Carroll County, we're cost sharing.
Right, and, and with, but does that, does that, being with Carroll County, does that save us anything?
Yeah, it saves us a huge amount of work and money, because they actually, they actually just hired an extra staff person because they were so busy. Plus, they have a full-time grants administrator, and that's why we can get, they've gotten millions of dollars in grant money to help with these Storm Pond projects, which is great.
Okay, thank you. I, I have, I have one more thing if we're done.
No, I'm just, I'm texting Mark to tell Bruce we're almost done, so he needs to get over here. Go ahead, Bob.
In, in years past, Bill Butts has put together a, an information exchange where, you know, one or two members from all the commissions meet and, and discuss, and all the town councils there, and, and discuss what's going on in their commission today, and, you know, how they can work together in the future. Now, Mr. Butts, he planned one in two thousand and fourteen, and then went into the hospital the day that it happened. So he planned another for two thousand and fifteen, and went into the hospital the day that it happened.
We're not, we're not doing.
Stop planning, Bill.
He's not going to do another one, I'm hoping.
So he's, he's, he's planning one for some time, and I think you were, Saint June, July?
Well, Heather told me she's not going to tell me when the day is.
So I just wanted to get out there on everybody's radar that we're planning another one of those for, you know, get your flowers and stuff for Bill when he goes in the hospital.
I don't know, I broke it today.
Uh-oh.
You got to get the little screws, and they line right up in those holes. They're in bad shape anyways. We fixed it.
But, but that's it. And I, I forgot to give that as part of my report, and I got that look, that reminded me.
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, over the last month, I've worked on the special exception hearing that took place the other day on the firearms business. Also worked on, and we completed and got all signed, the police station lease. So our tenancy has begun there. And also worked on a parking lot lease over near the train station, or the Train Depot building.
Okay, we have the code enforcement one. Is there any other business? Then we are waiting for the election results. I'm assuming Bruce is not here yet. I just, I just texted Mark, because I have Mark's, Mark's cell, and told him we're almost done.
God, are we going to have to send the police out to get him?
So. What? If you've got a tech, maybe it's them.
It says stall.
Bruce, I picked up a, oh, that's a different Bruce.
Can we recess?
Yeah, do you want to reset, recess to, well, let's recess till Bruce gets here.
Do we need to do bills, or just do bills last?
I'll make the motion.
We pay bills.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bills are done.
Okay, we are not going to have a closed meeting, so we are just waiting for the election results to come in. And then we will adjourn after that. So we'll recess until then.
Man of the hour, two and a half hours.
The Town Council is now back in session in order to recognize the Chair of the Election Commission, Bruce Walls. Bruce?
I thought you were all waiting to hear the fire company report.
We didn't hear that, actually.
The reason for the delay is that we have about three different ways we reconcile the results. And we get it down to maybe one vote here, four votes there, and we try to find out what the discrepancy is. We had a very good turnout. We had twenty-eight point seven-four percent turnout. A total votes were cast, one thousand nine hundred and sixteen.
Good call.
And we were swamped around supper time. And one of the things that may have happened is someone may have decided not to wait and left, and so the little tallies were off. But none of the tallies are significant to affect the outcome of the election.
So Bruce, are you saying you think somebody like signed in and then never went to vote? They just left?
Right, and decide, like, I can't wait, because the line was so long, and they left.
Okay.
We were having, somebody might have gone in the sign-up line before they got checked off, and.
Gotcha.
There's just a little, but we're only like three or four votes off in that process. But we're very, we're only one vote off on the, really, the tally between the machines and the vote cards. And somebody may have just walked by, handed it in, and then said, "Oh, I'm not going to vote," and walked on out. So you never know. But again, as I said, they won't affect it. First off, I'd like to thank the members of the Board of Election Supervisors for their work on this. This is our long day. We started at quarter to six this morning, getting things set up. In the town of Mount Airy, the total registered voters, you'll like this number, six thousand six hundred and sixty-six. There were eighty-seven absentee ballots distributed, eighty-three were returned. So when you figure, we had one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three machine cast votes and eighty-three absentee ballots, that gave us one thousand nine hundred and sixteen total votes cast. Out of those votes, and this was going to be off by one number when you, if you add it up, but the number in Frederick County was six hundred and sixty-two, and the number in Carroll was one thousand one hundred and seventy-two. And that's machine votes cast. We don't have any way of knowing what county cast the absentee ballots. So the, and also, as I'm thanking people, let me not forget to thank Debbie and the town staff, who without this work, we could not have done this. So here are the official vote results. For the Office of Town Council, Leslie Dickinson, eight hundred and thirty-eight. Larry Hushour, one thousand two hundred and three. Carl Munder, two hundred and twenty-nine. Scott Strong, one thousand ninety-six. Does everyone have that?
Yep.
For the Office of Mayor, Ben Greenstein, six hundred and forty-six. Joe Muse, forty. And Patrick Rockenberg, one thousand two hundred and twenty-six.
One thousand two hundred what? Twenty-six. Two, one thousand two hundred and twenty-six.
We, we. One thousand two hundred and twenty-six.
I get it, Tom. All right, I will move.
No, I'm not done yet.
Okay.
We had write-ins. We had ten write-ins for Town Council. We had a number of people, nine people, they got one vote. Unfortunately, Dick Swanson didn't come out on top this year. He only got one vote. But Zach Peters got six.
Wow.
And for Mayor, we had three write-in votes for, for the Office of Mayor. So, Mr. President, that is the results of the election from the Board of Election Supervisors. I offer them to the council for their approval, and also eventually for the proper disposition of the election tally sheets, ballots, et cetera.
I will move that we accept those election results. Let's see, a second from Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will move that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bob, Jason, you guys want to aye on adjourning? Okay, we're adjourned. We're good.